School Board to order. Ms. Branch?
Yeah.
Here.
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 Here. Chairwoman Frazier, if you would, do the honors.
Yes, well, if you'd like to also call to order the members of the school.
Ms. Hutchinson, would you please call, Rob?
Yes, your lady.
Here.
Ms. Morrison, here.
Ms. Pallett, here.
Ms. Stone, here.
Ms. Rachel.
Here.
And we have the meeting agenda, no amendments. May I get a motion?
Motion.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Ms. Branch.
Mr. Havis.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and get into the to the meat of the meeting tonight. Dr. White, Mr. Ashcraft.
All right, first of all, good evening, Ms. Frazier, Mr. Moore, and school board and board of supervisors members. Mr. Ashcraft and other guests, thank you for your presence tonight at our joint budget work session. As I present to you this evening, I respectfully ask that you hold off questions until the end of the presentation. And oh, do we have it on the screen or we're not going to? Yeah, in front of you either way. Thank you. As part of the profile of the Virginia graduate, teachers are tasked with modeling the five Cs. Communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and citizenship. To ensure that students are equipped with the skills necessary to navigate in a global society. With that, I'd like to share with you the six Cs of the King William County Public School Budget to exemplify the work that the division has done in the face of a global pandemic and the resources we are requesting to ensure a sustainable, quality educational organization moving forward. We are proud of the many accomplishments of our students and staff today. Our students excel in and out of the classroom. The DECA chapter received the Program of Work Preferred Award. This award is given to the chapters that accumulate points based on the number of competitions, projects, and community service activities they have completed during the school year. King William High School student Gabby Carter qualified for state band competition. The Future Farmers of America golf and cheer teams won or placed in state competitions. King William High School wrestler Austin Weeks won his second state title just a few weeks ago. Mrs. Heather Galgano, Hamilton Homes Middle School teacher, was chosen to participate in the 2021 SOL Item and Test Review Committee. And Mrs. Heather Ludwig, King William High School teacher, received a United States Department of Education Institutional Resilience and Expanded Post-Secondary Opportunity Grant. This grant will cover tuition and fees for a master's program. Once Mrs. Ludwig completes the program, she will be certified to teach dual enrollment courses. And as you know, the King William High School 2021 football team won the Virginia High School League Class Two State Championship. Scott Moore, a King William native, was named Coach of the Year, and Demond Clayborne was named Offensive Player of the Year. The King William High School football program gained national attention. Recruiting staff from UVA, Virginia Tech, Wake Forest, Maryland, Michigan, Penn State, and others visited King William High School or attended King William High School games this past season. This community was blessed to watch our student athletes succeed on and off the field. As Bill Curry, former University of Alabama head coach and ESPN analyst, says, "Football is more than a game." At a time when our country, state, and community were divided, the King William High School football program provided opportunities for our community to join together as one and support this team, our children. King William had more spectators in Salem on December 11th than Graham High School, which is located only about an hour away from Salem. The King William community believes in our children and sees the benefit of a quality school division. One of our core values as a school division is to teach children how to demonstrate kindness and to act as good stewards of the community and the world. This year, students celebrated local veterans at Hamilton Homes Middle School, raised over $5,000 for Cool Spring Primary School student Camden Newbill, who fell ill at the beginning of the school year, supported toys for tots, and just a few weeks ago, raised over $6,000 for a King William High School student, Micah Coffin, who is battling brain cancer. For the 2022-23 school year, King William County Public Schools is proud to be implementing the Virginia Preschool Initiative, which will allow for 30 to 36 four-year-olds to be enrolled in an all-day preschool program housed at Cool Spring Primary School. We understand that there are a limited number of preschool opportunities for children in King William. Therefore, the VPI program will help to fill this additional need for families in our community. King William County Public Schools continues to partner with the Parks and Recreation Department through the use of facilities. Each day, the after-school program meets at a Quentin Elementary School. This program runs from the first day of school to the last day of school. The youth basketball program is housed at Cool Spring Primary School and Hamilton Homes Middle School. Five to six days a week from late November through early March. The adult pickleball program is housed at a Quentin Elementary School on Saturdays. And the summer program, which runs from 7:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Sunday, Monday through Friday, will be housed at Cool Spring this summer from June 6th through August 5th, which represents an additional two weeks over the past years. And the King William Raiders Youth Football and Cheer Program uses King William County Public Schools' fields and utilities from August through November, November each year. As we seek to return to normalcy, we must realize that students in the Commonwealth have not experienced a traditional academic year since 2019-20, when schools were abruptly closed for the pandemic. This year, students and teachers have regained a sense of normalcy with the return to in-person instruction, which allows for student collaboration and face-to-face interaction with teachers. However, this has not been without its challenges due to disruptions caused by previous COVID protocols. Even still, staff and students have been working diligently to address unfinished learning. To support teachers and students with this continued progress, the division has implemented Mastery Connect. This program allows administrators and teachers to have immediate access to student data and can be utilized, that can be utilized to guide instructional practices and make data-informed decisions. This is an opportunity for an expanded focus on student achievement, targeted interventions, and supports. And in an effort to create continuity across the division, King William County Public Schools will transition to a new state-supported learning management system, Canvas. Canvas easily connects teachers, students, and parents and can be used to monitor grades and assignment submissions. Additionally, teachers can share course documents and facilitate communication with students and parents. The use of Canvas allows for access to course content at school and at home, which supports student engagement during remote learning days. This LMS will also allow teachers to collaborate with divisions across the state and access statewide resources. However, the King William County Public School Division is currently facing many challenges, some of which include recruitment and retention, the increased cost of doing business, and funding our capital needs. The recruitment and retention of licensed teachers is a national struggle for which King William County Public Schools is not immune. Prior to the pandemic, 73% of our teaching staff spent their teaching tenure solely in King William. The overarching consensus is that teachers want to serve the community where they live and where they were raised. Over the past two years, we have seen the number of teachers resigning double, which is not typical. Previously, the trend was that teachers who come to King William usually stay here. Through exit interviews, we know that many teachers are leaving the profession altogether due to the increased stress and workload from the pandemic. Staff are securing jobs with greater compensation packages, increased flexibility, and less public criticism in the current job market. Teacher shortages have been a challenge for years, but the pandemic has exacerbated the problem. The National Edweek Research Center survey conducted in the fall found that nearly half of district leaders and principals said that they struggled to hire a sufficient number of full-time teachers this school year. Also, enrollment in teacher preparation programs has been declining steadily over the past decade, raising some concerns about the strength of the pipeline into the profession. This leads us to the question. What can we do to recruit the teachers we need for our students? The current market is one in which the supply is less than demand and that those who are interested in education are not coming to us in traditional manner. Therefore, we have to be more creative in our recruitment, which means recruiting career switchers and provision of licensed teachers. As part of our current budget request, King William County Public Schools is funding a 5% raise based on the governor's budget. This raise is crucial for retention and recruitment of staff. As you can see, our peers are offering raises comparable or higher to offset this recruitment and retention dilemma. In order to be competitive in the current recruitment and retention market, we need to continue to stay in line with our neighboring school districts with regard to our compensation package. This slide illustrates the current salary scales for the 2021-22 school year. It is noteworthy to mention that our teacher pay falls short of the pay scale used by the other division in our own county. With inflation and other COVID-related issues, the cost of doing business has increased substantially over the past few years, which has put a strain on our budgets. State and federally mandated services for students have risen quite dramatically, almost 100%, in areas where divisions across the Commonwealth are experiencing critical shortages. And substitutes, which are also at a premium, have shown an increased cost of approximately 36%. These increases represent expenditures that we cannot avoid. In fact, minimum wage requirements have cost the division about $40,000 in direct wages and $50,000 in support service wages, an increase of over $90,000 within the past three years, not to mention the increase in gas prices that we have experienced over the past six months. This brings us to our requested budget, representing an increase over level funding of $888,340, which is reflective of the increase in our staff retention and recruitment efforts, federal mandates, and the increased cost of goods and services. You will note that instructional costs make up 69% of our total operating expenses, for which the VDOE requires a minimum of 65%. However, if we included our ITRTs, who directly support instruction in each of our schools, that percentage increases. And finally, here is our capital plan, which was presented on February 28th during a Board of Supervisor budget work session. And with that, I thank you and ask if there are any questions.
So our current reserve is about 700,000. As you saw from the capital plan we presented on the 28th, we would like to hit that for quite a few capital projects that are outstanding. And we're still waiting on the FY21 audit to determine what the carryover would be that would go into the reserve fund for this past year.
The preschool program, about what percentage will that meet the needs of the community?
It's not going to be a large percentage. What has happened in the past? We used to have a preschool program several years ago.
Oh, we remember the complaint.
The concern, though, is that the students are coming into our schools and kindergarten, not equipped to start school, either socially or academically. And so they are ill-prepared and we are having to teach them so that they are in a better transition into our school program, our regular school program.
There's some evaluation to establish that, that they're not prepared?
We are, it's from our teachers, and only from our teachers, but just, you know, trying to get them to line up in a line, use scissors, or write their name, things like that, that they are just not, they're not prepared for. And so our teachers are working extra hard in kindergarten to get them a level where they can progress into the next grade level.
One of the things in here is about that grant that will get a teacher up to being able to teach dual enrollment. How are we doing on our staff being able to do dual enrollment? So it was a discussion recently, I think as part of, there's some systems, Matthew or Middlesex, one of them, that aren't offering any because they don't have any qualified teachers right now.
That's always been our problem, getting dual enrollment qualified teachers. So we are trying to grow our own, who work with RCC, to get the requisite requirements for them to teach dual enrollment. So that's something we are always trying to do, expand our course offerings in school, allowing students to gain college credit, the opportunity to gain college credit before graduating.
We have a lot of the academy.
The salary comparisons, are they what they are now?
They are for, yes, 21, 22 school, the current school, we're guessing. And then the raises that are being given, we've spoken with several of the school divisions throughout the budget planning season. And so every time they did increase or change, you know, we updated our comparison. I think the last time we updated was just last week.
And more, you mentioned that your resignation is a double. What kind of figure is that?
We've had several this year, even during the school year that resigned. But our numbers, I don't have my full resource, but we may have.
So Ms. Johnson and I looked at it earlier today. So going into next year, we have 11 that are leaving the profession. We had two during the school year that decided to leave the profession as a whole. And then we have lost so far eight to better pay and flexible work.
On the most part, it is a trend across all.
Teachers just aren't so dependent with the open market and the current job market. Teachers are fighting for better pay, more flexibility, and there's a advantage of that.
Could we touch on Virtual Virginia, that opportunity for to teach from home?
What the state has provided, funded for, well, I shouldn't say funded for, the state provided Virtual Virginia opportunities for students, especially during the pandemic, they expanded the opportunity. It's an opportunity for students to learn at home or remotely from school. So especially in areas or courses where we don't have sitting courses in our schools or scheduled courses. Say, for example, if we didn't have a physics course, they could enroll in Virtual Virginia. If we didn't have a, whatever course it is, they can enroll in Virtual Virginia and get the credit towards high school graduation. It was even expanded this year to include the lower elementary and middle schools too. So students who wanted to work remotely, but they are coming back to in-person learning, could take advantage of that. We did not necessarily expand it on a wide scale, as we did want to open up our schools more fully.
Even knowing, and everything I've heard, is that virtual is really not that great. And that, I guess it's certain kids that get it, but the majority of them are.
That really opened up our eyes in education on the opportunities for virtual learning, remote learning. But like you said, a lot of kids, we had some students that excelled, but other students, and that's what we kind of use to make our decision for students, are they prepared to do remote work or virtual work? Is, are they disciplined enough? Are they going to sit there and do the work, even though they do not have an adult or a teacher there guiding them or instructing them? And that's been the problem, is the education issue.
How many children that were attending public schools that are now homeschooled? Are you still losing students to that, or so they're coming back?
Right, it was, I think that our P D, over 150 students that we lost in our ADM because they went to homeschool.
So.
Does your state and our federal funding still depend, how does it affect your state and federal funding?
ADM, it still depends on that. We had a waiver last year. We're waiting to see if it will be waived this year, but I do not think that will be the case. We have gained some of those students that we lost that are ADM back, but it is not as, it's not the same number as where we were before. We still have a lapse in our ADM numbers.
So what is the actual enrollment number? Is it 2007 or?
2031 was the last report.
Okay, and what was it last year?
2017 at one point. Pre-pandemic, we were at 2158. And expecting to grow to 2170, but the pandemic hit and we. So our current budget is based on 2000, which any of the preschool and the VPI kids do not count as ADM.
When you said raises, it's like, go ahead.
Does the standard retention recruitment, 494,000, 400,500, cover to bring all these red sections up to, or is that?
It will not, and that wasn't our intent, it was adjusted line, yeah, with what, the raises that the state.
5%?
Yes.
Because all of them are getting equal to or greater raises.
Yeah, that's one of the little state charges, pretty much.
Don't come up, because the grades look like they match, except for grade 15. Grade 15 all across, is it something?
Depends on how the counties have the salary steps set up. I remember we were talking about that salary set in either one, which you have a very narrow band, right?
So Caroline is proposing a 10% raise. Did they get a raise last year?
Yes, they got five.
Well, and we'll, we have a thousand dollar variable between, say, if we were in a thousand dollar range or less than, you know, less than, greater than, or equal to, based on thousand dollar increments.
And how, I think 15 has gotten off is, over the years, it seems, and I wasn't here, but I can look back and see, like, one year we'd give a raise, one year we wouldn't. And so in those years, we weren't, we were, like, compressing our pay scale. So in years, and I know when we did the salary scale last year and looked across the people that connect to us, there were some counties that gave raises in the years that we did not give raises. So that's how they've been able to pass us in some of those areas.
But then it should be proportionate at every step, because it's only step 15, step 30 catches back up and it's back to normal.
Well, but step 15, you have to consider that the Great Recession was about, it's those years in there that were pushing for the middle step. And although maybe you weren't seeing raises going all the way through, you always had to tweak that starting salary a bit, or you were not bringing anyone in. And so it was compressing, yeah. Yeah, it just, it happened across the way.
Am I looking at this right, handle the county step 30? We are actually more than, more than handle.
Aren't you correct?
Yeah, so you have to read it somewhere.
So for Hanover County, what they did was they pushed their steps. And so step 30 is no longer their top step or the premier step. They actually go up to 41 steps.
So.
We stopped.
So what is? So are the steps related to teacher seniority?
So it depends, you know, generally in Hanover it is, but it depends, you know, in Heineken it is not. And so every, during the Great Recession, every locality dealt with the whole teacher pay increase or lack thereof differently. And some started adding steps on the end, and, you know, and then some burst it. And so unfortunately for comparability, it's very difficult now. But the one thing you can compare with confidence is that starting salary. And we're all competing for those new teachers. And so you can debate step 15, 30, and a lot of steps, and all the steps in between, but in the end, that probably really are most important.
This is definitely across the board, probably in us.
Yep, yep.
This is not, you lose the teaching.
No, you lose key personnel to competition.
What the, what is the form, let's call it, substitute teacher, part-time? We use, well, that's one of the problems that we're facing right now. We use a company to help supply our substitute. But that has not been reliable. Where in years before the pandemic, we may have had 80, 90% fill rates. They're down to 65, 70% fill rates. So we have a lot of days where teaching substitute positions go unfilled, where teaching positions go unfilled. And it's up to teachers to cover down, administrators to cover down, and no instruction typically is going on on those days, unfortunately, because they do not have a signature in that classroom for anyone to at least provide the materials for those students. It's, the pay really, I don't think it's the end-all deal, or it isn't part of it. You know, people, that's the thing that people go to, at the very beginning, is pay. But then now, why are we losing teachers? Because even when we weren't the top of the pay scale, you know, we had very low teacher retention, we always started our school year fully staffed. But what's happened is individuals, because of the stress put on them from the pandemic, they're leaving, and they're leaving for better pay. So I don't think it is pay in itself, but pay, flexibility, and less stress.
Not the knowledge, but that is on, but mental health, have you considered bringing in mental health experts too?
We did this year, we did a program with our, with our health benefits that offered mental health services to our employees. And we did have quite a few teachers, I understand, that they own themselves, but it is, you know, again, it is what they face every day. And I hear it every day about the stress that was placed on some students in the past two years because of pandemic. And actually, this year was tougher than last year. I think last year, teachers wore it and they were okay, even in a hybrid learning model. It made it work. This year was more stressing than ever, just because of conflict. Teachers were getting cursed out on a regular, administrators cursed out on a regular, nurses cursed out on a regular, because they were having to enforce orientation protocols. They were having to call and, you know, and do contact tracing. And it was no fault of their own, we were doing what we had to do based on CDC and EDH, but they were getting cursed out because they had to be the ones to contact the family.
And students were missed 10 to 14 days, have to.
And that was.
And then they were expected to offer them some type of instruction. And they are home while they were in quarantine, and then when they came back, they had to cut them off. So it's very frustrating, I think.
Very frustrating.
When I'm looking at this.
That's getting better.
Yeah.
It is. Speech, I'm sorry. Speech services, exactly what is that?
That's a requirement for students who have accommodations for speech. They are required to get those services, and those are at a premium right now.
Yeah.
So we have gone through two or three separate agencies, and they are still unable to provide the services necessary. And when that happens, we have to go back and provide comprehensive services to catch up those services that they have not received. And right now, we are doing it online, which is unfortunate, because we have identified individuals who are providing speech services, but not all of them being in person, because they're elsewhere. And so they're providing speech services partially, and that's one of our difficulties.
Is that the same thing? Is that the same thing?
It's probably not.
So.
Even, even virtually, it's, it's.
They can charge a premium.
Oh, so that's, that's, that's $185,000 projection.
So pre-pandemic, we were paying $65 an hour for someone in-house to come in and, and do speech services. Now we're paying, one is 75, Rosalyn, I'm looking to you, make sure, one is 90, and one is 100. And we also had to hire a para who works with one of the schools or between two schools to ensure that this, the computer with the speech pathologist on it moves from kid to kid to make sure that we're tracking the time appropriately. Did I miss anything? And we have one in person.
Can, is that fully fielded and fully underway? Can that be perhaps a path to make things better for our students?
It is, and that's why we implemented this year. It is not fully implemented yet. We're using this year as our transition year. It is probably more prevalent in our primary and elementary schools than it is in middle and high school, but they are taking steps to fully onboard with that system. What I like about it is that the data is current and the conversation around teaching and learning has changed. It's not the fact that, okay, I taught it, so the students must have gotten it. It's I taught it, I've assessed it. Those students who did not score mastery or near mastery are re, are remediated to make sure that they are caught up and that they are making progress.
I was going to Google that, it's a fascinating tool.
It is amazing that the amount of data and our principals are seeing it, the conversations change with teachers. They're seeing which students aren't doing well, and they're able to spiral back instruction to make sure that they catch up. It does cause some, I don't want to say problems, it doesn't cause a problem, but it is a requirement to look at their pacing. So we are looking now, since we're at our quarantine, we can be more flexible with our schedules, of creating small group instruction, pull students out, push them in, so that they can, those students who are being remediated aren't missing out on other instruction. So creating times where they can catch up, re, re- remediate, re-assess, so that they can go back into the classroom and continue their reactive progress.
Robert, I have these information questions.
Okay.
We have 195, you know, serving here, which remembers that 113 students came.
Okay, so do you have the number last year?
I do.
Okay.
Last year, it was 234, you know.
Okay, so.
130. But pre-pandemic, I have that number as well.
Okay.
158. Eighty-five.
Okay, thanks.
So we've seen obviously a little bit of growth in that segment of people that are out there to do that, and, and that was kind of leading back to the discussion about ADM because obviously that's, it's got to be something we're a little bit concerned about. Now, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball because no one saw the pandemic coming, but, you know, how are we thinking that this is going to affect things going forward, you know, parents that aren't in the school system yet that are getting ready to make that decision, what happens for that? But the answer that it kind of came, came out of, when we were looking at zoning and looking at housing stock and how we want to add et cetera, was that the enrollment growth has not grown at the same pace as our population growth. Don't know the back or forth, and obviously we can't pin it all on homeschooling, but there's, there's something there, and I've wondered if we're seeing that more broadly, what types of communities that's affecting? How we think that's going to, you know, affect kind of the future of the school system then?
Well, I have a little bit of experience in this area, but if you look back over the last 10 years, you would see across the state that there has been a drop, and they call it the live birth numbers. But you, you can go back and look at the live birth numbers by county, by year. And so there, there was a drop where you would see that the graduating classes in 12th grade for the last seven or eight years have been much larger than the incoming kindergarten. And that's across the state. So when you hear about student numbers are down overall, it's because of that. But we were just, it kind of plateaued and was coming back up, and so pre-pandemic, we were starting to see those numbers expecting to grow again. But there was a pretty significant bubble that just is passing through high school. And I think you were, we were looking at some of our 12th grade numbers versus our kindergarten, and there's, there's a difference, you know.
Well, right, it'll be more to see where we are in, you know, five to seven years from now, because it's pretty well documented.
Right. Parents had time at home, yeah. So anyway, but that's, that's what created some of that, you know, that even though you were seeing that housing stock increased, you were bringing in families that were, you know, that birth rate was lower than it had been for decades, you know, or something like that. But it was starting to catch back up, and actually, you, I think we're going to see a bubble come through.
Well, we may actually, no, it's, it's the opposite. They were expecting a big baby boom, but it's in the opposite. So we'll see another number pair.
Yeah, you know, we, we had a presentation here back, I think in September, that it said each new house was 1.93 school age students. I don't think we're that far, is that?
Well, we, yeah, I, I will add that later on because that's for houses with children. If you average out households overall, it's like 1.4.
Right, exactly.
I should assume they're 1.6, 1.5, somewhere around there.
It's not.
Yeah.
Okay, when I look at my own children, that's what I'm seeing with that, you know, they're just, like, when I was anxious at 23, 24, I had a baby, so family, my kids are 30 something and 40, and I keep saying, they can know what they're doing.
They realize how much they cost.
And it's always, and it's always that group that chooses not to have children.
Yeah.
Or free, free board members, with, you know, who don't have children.
And, and if you don't mind, I'd like to back back up a minute to the challenges that we were facing. Doctor White touched on why people were looking, and when, when the question came up about virtual Virginia, but we've also lost some teachers to go to teaching at Virtual Virginia.
They can be at home and teach and have the same competitive salary, but never return. And we lost, Aaron, his school year, of Brooklyn, went to Edith, and pretty much double head salary.
Less stress.
I think I've asked Dr. White before, the parents, their system is fluid enough to take care of the bubbles and the troughs, and we just adapt to whatever that sort of, you know, we are small enough that we can, you know, kind of adjust our schedules or move teachers within schools to different grade levels when we can. And then we can also look at our attrition rates and if we don't need a teacher, you know, not hire both position and save that for something. It is purely driven on numbers at the elementary, primary school, at the middle school, and in high school, it's more driven on course offer. And so it's a little different makeup, a different formula with your staffing, a high school, and it is for an elementary school.
The virtual Virginia, is there a tuition cost with that?
We do pay a tuition for that, we do pay a cost for that, and that is.
Well, we get a spread of the number, of course, there's a fee, I want to say under 12, under 14.
I think the fee is around 4,000 per student.
Really?
If they carry a full load.
Well, to jump back to the conversation we're having, if you look at the increase in the budget, then you see there's internal cuts through attrition. That represents the opportunity for that flexibility, that if enrollment is down some, then they may, through attrition, open up some positions that we do not have to fill. So being small, it's great to have that flexibility, but also being small, you do not have flexibility when it comes to fixed costs. A certain amount of your budget, your operating budget is fixed cost, we have to heat the building no matter how many students are there. So it's not a simple mathematic formula to say, you're down 10 students, so 10 times, you know, the average cost, that's what we should be saving because we're still paying for the heat of the building and the operating costs.
I think that's evolved and lost.
Correct. And our virtual Virginia, if we have a lot of that.
Well, that's not really.
It's based, uh, virtual Virginia is based on.
And what you told me is, if a child decides to go virtual, totally virtual, you're still responding, to the cost.
We don't have an opportunity typically for students to go totally virtual. We have a few that do it with different programs. But yes, we are responding to the cost of the program. Virtual Virginia, the U of M News, Edgenuity, we have different online programs, we do pay for that.
How many non-citizen students do we have in, in the school system?
Do I should pay?
Do I should, um. 15, right?
13.
13, she said 13.
Really?
Some of our staff would, or some of our participants out of the county, they would have been fired up.
How much has the recovery fund been affected with? For the SFR funds, or what do we call them? It's, it's a one-time cost, you know, we have been able to use those monies to pay for goods, services, supplies. But we know that they're going to run out at some point in time, so we've been very smart and heavily implemented them. And what we use them for, we use them for things that are not going to be sustainable. Or if we use it for a position, we notify authorities that this is a grant-funded position, that we do not have future funds for it, it will not be taken. So we've been very, very deliberate with what we do it for, programs such as tutoring, you know, we've done it for finite time. Employed teachers to tutor through the pandemic and through, you know, to catch up to learning loss, but we've been very deliberate with what we've done with that.
We're anticipating a second tranche here a few past, June, July, if we've already targeted.
Year one?
Not, not that we are aware of.
We, we, the last one was our SFR fund add-on, and we've already, we didn't all we asked for, but we've already identified the services that we're going to provide to students.
And that was only set aside for unfinished learning, summer school and extended day, so we have tutoring, after-school tutoring money, but that was very specific as to what we could use it for.
Our virtual Virginia fee is $350 per course for a school year.
And that's one course of student enrolled, eight courses.
So that is a direct cost to, to the school system. Thank you.
Nothing really, I, I was going to say that we probably need to come up with a little bit harder questions because you, we all have been on the ball tonight.
I am, right too, they're really good.
Well, you're supposed to.
I'm having a question.
Well, this isn't a hard one.
Yeah.
We're getting ready to go into that.
Yeah, we do.
How many are each step?
We can have the expanded.
That's good.
But he's, you want to know how many people are in each step?
Right, so are there like a majority of them in this segment, the higher or lower, or a lot of them at the beginning and a lot of them at the end?
I can, we have entered it into admin, so I can pull some reporting, I, I hope.
But it would only help looking at ourselves because you just said the steps don't match, according to school.
We can't, I can't tell you what it is in other school missions, we just look internally, what our demographic provides. As much as I can say, it was that easy because, you know, there are times when there were no steps, when we could not give raises. And what we did is we moved them to a different step of, you know, pay, and so we calculate our start. So it just depends, it's not a true tenure or time in, 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 in addition. I understand that contract. The very convoluted. You must be talking about the.
All right, the, the number of days, the deeper contract days, and how it's spread pay over the summer. And, but it, it is very much, be careful talking about teacher contracts because when I first transitioned from local government into education, my thought was, we should get rid of these. These are overly complicated, and that is a very dangerous thing to say.
That form of a contract with teachers has been going on a long time.
Yes, and it, it is, it's strongly held across the state, across the nation, so it is. So, and, and, and part of the pay scale comes into that, we get that idea of the teacher contract and the number of days that are included in it and calculation, if they were leaving this year and how you go back, it's not simply that you left them the 15th of the month, so we stopped paying them on the 15th of the month. You have to go back to the start of the school year, how many days did they work, how many days did they not work, and prorate it all to determine. And so it feels overly complex, but it is very much protected. My retired teacher down there will tell you. The only thing I would say is, please agree more, while it doesn't feel great 15 years from now, step 15 will be 30. And to the extent that you are keeping pace with that starting salary and what your neighbors are doing, you are at least are not getting further behind. And so you're stepping your way, you know, you're stepping your way through, no one likes it, no one enjoyed the Great Recession. You know, we're now in the Great Resignation, and that's why everyone's losing all of these employees, there's shortage of workers overall. And so that's creating opportunities for everyone, maybe to consider something different or greater than the next level. So while it could cost, be too expensive to go back in six, seven years, we'd love to do it, but likely cost for citizens. To make sense that you're keeping pace with your neighbors and at least keeping it stable, that's part, you know, that's at a minimum, we need to be back.
Can you go back to the Great Recession, Terry? I, I'm thinking about it. I think that whole first four years when you were on this side of the table, I think the only year we funded raises were, was that BRF.
Right.
For that entire four years, I mean, that's four years of compression right there.
Sure did. On the employee, sure did.
Sorry.
So, 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 so the question, the question is, the question is, at that point in time, were we pretty much keeping up, or were we still behind in pay scale?
Well, and so.
All those years ago.
Right, right.
Oh, wait.
We, we definitely fell behind at one point in time, and I, I recall the meeting where one certain financier, he was very passionate, like, for us to fund these raises one year so that we didn't fall even further behind, and we've been able to catch up obviously a little bit since then, which is good, but we don't want to lose pace obviously. But it just illustrated the point that, of how much damage that era did to public employee, employee pay in general. You know, and to the extent that we're catching up, and some of these numbers might look like big numbers to do, you know, if we're aiming to do 5% each year or by any, I'm like the state's doing, you know, 10% is a big number, but then go and look at what the private sector's been doing for that, you know, for that time at some of these, especially the professional level positions. And you'll understand why people are walking away from it for that.
I've been working for governments for, I guess, 50 years, and I remember they give you a 20% raise, but then they didn't tell everybody that it's been 10 years since you got one, so it's a 2% raise per year is all it really was.
Well, and what we've been trying to do, and what I know the school boards are trying to do, what we're trying to do with county, is rather than, you know, try to straighten by, we've been trying to be more. is rather than, you know, try to straighten by, we've been trying to be more consistent about doing these increases annually in whatever fashion we can, especially state, that's something to try to relieve that debt, so that we're not way out of it.
Well, you don't leave money on the table, and you do not go back and recover that $100. Um, but, you know, a year or two later, you realize we have to catch up, and you've lost that, you've left that out.
But there were years that we did leave them.
Yes, yes, and that's what really hurts you, so when they're willing to pay their share, if you don't step up, you miss that opportunity.
That last year, the year before, that we didn't get a raise, and then we had to say, catch up on them.
Two years, two years ago. It was two years ago.
That was, that was hard, and we were trying to go through the, that was falling, but there wasn't a, there wasn't a, it was painful.
Right, I think that was, that was the original pandemic budget, where we all had to kind of talk about everything that we'd worked on, until pretty much right now, and then, uh, start over. Again, assuming that, that everything was going to be lost, crumbling, and revenues were going to crater, fortunately, that's not necessarily how it's worked out, but now costs are exploding, so.
Right.
A couple of times out there, folks talk about, you know, some of the teachers who went to corporate, we'll never compete with them, but thank God, we've got people that come out and want to be teachers. That's the only thing making us survive.
One is shrinking, and the other thing is that, you know, you do have to try to keep up pay pay, because I'm sorry, if you come out of school as a teacher, you still have, um, loans to pay back, but once you get that job, you have to pay those loans back. You have the price of gas now being, I saw it from the corner.
Don't say, don't say.
I'm not, I'm not, and shook my head.
I put some comments up on Facebook.
So, food costs are going up, apartment costs are going up, or housing costs, I mean, it is, it's just horrible, so we gotta, we gotta make it so that they want to stay here or come here and, and teach and live here and, you know, do it all. We gotta make it that way.
Travis, I saw your tips, and I saw you arguing with him myself, as always.
We'll handle questions about capital, because I don't know that, you said we were talking about lending.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, from this law mistake, uh, the update on the school capital expenses, the garage, possible garage projects, the school divisions, and, uh, I've been told about some, that there's been a joint discussion over the years, and maybe, uh, it might be a good time for we do that discussion, to see where it might, it might go.
Didn't you mention that it might not be an option for us to do it, so far as having a, a joint venture with schools, for us? I thought you mentioned something about that, but you didn't?
Well, I was doing a previous locality that had it funded, and they couldn't get, uh, somebody to agree on who was in charge. So they ended up, uh, ditching the whole project. You know, hopefully, cooperation can, uh, can overcome, uh, you know, what might be a broken perspective on it. If it, uh, if it's good for both sides, I think there's ways to make it work.
So.
I was just going to say, maybe it's time to dust off any, any possible locations, the plans, or, uh, there was, uh.
We, we had talked about that in a meeting back in, I guess, August.
Our big thing is that the garage we currently have no longer fits the bus sizes that we have, so in the winter, the back end is hanging out of garage, can't close that door, we do the work on it, so we are really in need of a larger facility to accommodate the larger buses that we bring in, uh, get around, and then one of the things we're looking at, and I'm not sure if that gets filled in, but we still have a garage with a pit, those are no longer, you know, standard or compliance. Yeah, they, they don't let you, yeah, they'd rather you lift them and drive over and some of the down.
They were nice to work on, we.
So, I guess we, we would just talk about this one, we have a discussion, but we would have to staff it without people, mechanics also? Or could we, could we do a joint venture with them?
I think anything possible is, and we've talked about joint ventures, we've talked about, you know, and one of the things we're looking at is that if we had staffed mechanics, that they could work on the handling vehicles as well, bring them in, um, service them. Uh, I do think one of the areas, though, that the biggest concern is for some of the specialty vehicles, you know, T vehicles, and that they're picking up that special sort of patient to work on those, and that is a higher pay rate than our, our head of the parent, unfortunately, so that could be a discrepancy somewhere as well.
No comment for the name, yeah.
Yeah.
Question I've never had, I guess, I've never thought of contract. Um, I know that you're correct, if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Stone, I know that some of our neighbors do that, uh, contracted out, and they are paying a premium, correct?
What contract, a bus repair?
No.
Bus service, all, all buses, everyone. You know, they've talked about it, but it's never been cost effective to do it, and then again, it's a staffing issue, you're going to pay, whether it's your own employee or someone else's. So I don't know anybody doing that, you know?
There were, you, like, false church, this at one point, there were a few, and they were not successful, and I'm talking about fifteen, twenty years ago, and it was not successful, and, um, you know, our employees are, you know, coming in contact with their children every day.
And that's the, I mean, uh, the piece that is a contract with drivers, companies, that, that.
I wouldn't like it.
They will assure you, they will write a contract that says we'll do background checks, they will assure you, but, um, if they don't necessarily have the skill set that we have to recognize certain things and to have that ability.
The reason I ask is simply to make sure we cover every day, and look at every aspect, that perhaps say, uh, that we could probably save them, but we're not suffering, you know, that relationship. I still remember I watched drivers, my model.
Well, and frankly, when a contractor cannot fill a position similar to what we're dealing with with a staffing agency, you're still left holding the bag, you know, they call and say, sorry, we don't have a driver today, we just don't have a driver. And you're left, you know, holding the bag, because you don't have buses anymore, you don't, where in our situation, we're, we're free, you know, we're struggling and moving people around, and finally come onto C D L and says, our mechanics are driving buses, sometimes, correct me if I'm wrong. And, you know, you just lose that type of, and they're just done, yeah.
Driving cars. One of the calls, I think, that we got picked up clean. There are some brands that are coming out now, they'll get electric buses, or they'll provide infrastructure, uh.
Alternative fuel also, I think, I don't know whether that's natural gas, propane, or what. Yeah.
I will say that the Director of Operations and myself have, um, done quite a few grant applications. I think there's a lot of people in the pot, so the last grant application we submitted, February fifteenth, we found out we did not get. Um, because we, we only thought we could fund two, two buses, where I guess most of the districts in there were going to be able to fund ten to twelve. But we are continuing, continuously looking.
I'm sure we'll come up with questions that we can pass on later, but right now, I don't have anything else. I think they've done a great job in presenting.
We actually, anybody staffed today? Stone, I know you have several. You can get some information. I'm pretty much sure we have.
She, she, she pretty much answered all my questions.
Number of employees lost it, and I'll provide that.
Go ahead and wrap this up, if anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, uh, I'm fine. What are your thoughts?
That's right, this is the board.
I'm not going to mess it up, man.
I don't really have any requests, but I would like to say something about the Ukraine, you know, it's, I mentioned last time, everybody prayed, I think we, things are worse there. But so far as this, it was a good presentation, I appreciate it.
We have, we have made a, uh, this is my third on the board, and I was associated with C D A, watching budget, cutting process coming out. This has been very, very, the effort off the board, it's even, it's, 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 uh, optimistic we're going to be able to get this happen, that, that making the optimistic.
I'm not going to say anything.
Oh, we'll, we'll make it happen, it, it's got to happen, Mitch.
I want to just, on question, if you have a question that's been asked tonight. Okay, all right, um, then I'll put a motion for a general, remove, that, remove the proper second, the two quarters are done.
Supervisor, you have the right to repair.
Sorry. Hi.
Hi.
Freeman.
Hi.
Hi.